I'll text him real fast.
Tim's not?
No, he's not coming? Oh, okay.
Council will come to order. It is 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum. All members of the council are present except for Tim Kurtz and Alicia Flurry. Mayor Sanders is joining us tonight via Skype from Banderas, Texas. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Dr. Jimmy McLeod, and the pledge is by Councilmember Jensen. Will you please stand?
Let's pray. Father God, it is with great joy that we come together tonight to thank you for this incredible town we get to live in, for this wonderful nation that we are a part of, and for your love for us and for whatever goes on in our lives that you're very involved and concerned. We thank you for our government. And Lord, I pray with Thanksgiving tonight for all of the men and the women who have authority over us in any way, from our local government here to the school boards, to our state, all the way into the nation's capital. Pour your Spirit upon them and help them to know your word. Cause them to be men and women of integrity, obedient concerning us, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godless and honesty. Let wisdom enter their hearts and let knowledge be pleasant to them. Let discretion preserve them and understanding keep them, to deliver them from the way of evil and those who would be harmful to them. Make their hearts and their ears attentive to godly counsel, doing what is right in your sight. So I pray that you would uphold, let the dwell in this government locally, Father, that every man and woman, these who serve our council, these who serve our town staff, and in all the facilities here of this incredible city, we thank you and give anointing and blessing to them and help and hope in every day of their life. So we pray for our nation, our governor, all of the aspects of our system, and for our president, for our congress, and we pray that truth is revealed and that we are civil to one another and that we do, as you say to us, speak the truth in love. So make kindness, understanding, civility, listening to all areas, and valuing the person in dealing separately with opinions or but caring for a person, that we might be together and feel valued regardless of what we come down on. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. So I'm going to do things a little bit different than our illustrious mayor. I probably won't read as much of the items as he does, but I will say that we do in the back of the room have an agenda that each of you can get, and I have requested, for those who are watching on Facebook Live, that there be a link to the agenda so that you can follow along. So the first item is citizens' presentation. I think we have one speaker. Susan, you're up.
Thank you. Susan Etstrom, 269 Oak Hill Drive. Good evening, mayor and council. I wanted to address you on two recent decisions where I believe council would have benefited from input of the shelter board or individuals who sit on that board. The items were both related to the issuance of tags and fee for pet registrations. This item specifically impacts the shelter, and the board would have been happy to review this item and make recommendations to you. We serve at your pleasure and welcome providing balanced resident input. For example, a couple of the areas where the information that you had was inaccurate. Officers did and do have access to the information in their patrol cars. Previously, it was an Excel spreadsheet provided by the ACO. It is now online and accessible on the computer in their car. Our current ACO spent time over the last few months in putting over seventeen hundred tag details into the system so that the system would be efficient for the officers. Having this information accessible allows the officer to return the dog in the field versus driving all the way back to Trophy Wood from the Highlands, for example, when the dog resides around the corner. This is far more efficient for the officer and reduces the time they're off the street logging the dog into the shelter and taking care of it. The system allows searches by description, breed, and street locations. The ACO can upload a photo of a dog if it's been in the shelter previously, and the officers will have access to that as well. Cities around us that have tags and registration include Fort Worth, Dallas, Colleyville, Capel, Roanoke, and Irving. That was a ten-minute search I did, and I'm sure I could find many more. They have varying ways and timeframes to register and implement one or three years based on rabies shots. They even provide discounts or no fees for senior citizens. In addition, I do a lot of the scanning of the microchips, and a large percentage of the tags are not registered or the address or phone details have not been updated. Chips are not necessarily as efficient for the officers because they then need to go back to the shelter, use the scanner, check the tag, then you pick up the phone and start calling the agencies. Average time to get through to a chip company and get the owner information is about fifteen to twenty minutes, longer if you don't get the right company the first time. We understand the efficiencies the registration and tags provide, and we'll be looking at implementing without a fee and conducting PR campaigns to increase the number of residents to take advantage of the tags. For example, find Fido faster. When we ramp up our shelter volunteer program, we will help our ACO at events throughout the year with the goal of increasing the number of registration. This had not been done in the past because we were waiting approval of and receipt of the software that would provide these greater efficiencies. Lastly, when things are not working as well as you think, doing away with it may not be the right answer. It could be that addressing the issues, like increased utilization, correcting administrative errors of the past would make the current process better. But you failed to ask the questions of those who are willing to do the research and make the recommendations to you. I'll leave you with this. Many of you didn't know him, but my camper, when he was alive, served on our P&amp;Z board. I was a very young council member at the time and a little bit feisty because I was a whole lot younger. But when folks suggested wholesale changes or throwing things out, he'd say to us, "Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. The bathwater may be bad, but the baby's good." So I appreciate your time and listening to me, and I look forward to continuing to provide my volunteer services to our community and making this process as efficient as possible for our officers and our animal control officer who are on the street doing this day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Holly, do we have anyone else?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, then. What's that? Okay. Do you need to speak, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
I didn't sign up. I'm sorry. I didn't know.
Yeah, no, that's fine. If, after you speak, if you can just tell us your name and address, and then after you speak, fill out a card and hand to our town secretary.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
My name is Wes Parnell, and I live over at 53 Meadowbrook on the older side. Currently, we're not allowed Ford-facing attached garages. We are allowed Ford-facing detached garages, but I'd like to encourage, I guess, the city council to maybe look at changing some of the ordinance, like the new side had a PD in the Highlands area that was allowed Ford-facing attached garages. We have a great thing here with the golf carts, and a lot of us have growing families, and two-car garages on the old side on a lot of houses just aren't working. So I've been working with staff up here to rebalance a couple of houses, and I'm submitting my plans for the detached garages, which are allowed. And kind of some of the suggestions I'm getting is butt two exterior walls up together, have the roofs overhang each other. As long as they don't touch each other, you're allowed. And to me, you still have your Ford-facing garage, but we just have a gap between two exterior walls. And so I'd encourage you maybe to look at that on the older side. I think it adds a lot of value to homes, and as you probably know, a lot of the older homes are going to be having a lot of remodels, and I think it would benefit a lot of people over there to be able to use that. So instead of us having to go through and get a special use permit on every single home, I'd maybe encourage, I guess, the city council to look at changing that ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can fill out a card, and don't take our silence as not caring. We're not allowed to say much. Anybody else, Holly?
No, sir.
All right. Then we will go to item number one and special town manager class. You're up.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council, I want to give you an update on the 2008 fire camp, which will be held at the fire station between 8:00 AM and 12:00 noon, starting July 16th and running through July 20th. The purpose of the camp is to give incoming and outgoing high school seniors a chance to explore firefighting as a career choice. Some of the planned activities for the week will be wearing protective equipment, hose drills, utilizing extraction tools such as the jaws of life on actual real car, and then live-fire training in a burn tower. The camp is free to our residents, and applications are available at the fire department or online at trophyclub.org. And the deadline for the applications is Sunday, July 8th. And then with regard to the Fourth of July celebration, preparation is on track, and we expect another large turnout this year. The evening event will begin at 6:00 PM at Independence East Park with the fireworks show probably starting at 9:40 PM. The town hall ambassadors have completed the bundling of all the flags this week, and they'll be available to the block captains here for pickup at town hall between 12:00 noon and 5:00 o'clock this Thursday, and then also on Friday, June 28th, between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. The 5K run and fun run, we currently have seventy-five registrations. And then for the parade of patriots, the application deadline we extended to June 20th, and it now is closed with forty-five submissions. And as in the past, our park board members will judge floats for best HOA or neighborhood, most patriotic or spirit-filled of Trophy Club, best decked-out golf cart, and then one for the best-dressed pet. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
All right, I think you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Item number two is a shelter board update, and I actually have a PowerPoint. I think I've created a monster. Actually, Jill did this for me. So I wanted you to see sort of what we talked about. I think that a lot of us were really frustrated at the shelter not being ready when the town hall opened. And it was for a good reason that our veterinarian did not sign off on the shelter as it had just chain-link fence as the dividers and wasn't really safe for any dog or animal that might stay in there for a few days. So at this meeting of the Animal Shelter Board, they presented, they actually took us back. We don't often go back to the police station for good reason, but they took us back to the shelter. And if you can go to the next slide, these are some of the things that they have accomplished back there. You'll notice that the floor is now stained and has some of the back-to-blue paint mixed in the floor. But they did the staining on the concrete, and then they put these actual kennels in or dividers that the veterinarian here in town has. And what this does is it protects the dog from, you know, hurting its feet, hurting its paws. And it's allowed, I don't know if you can notice the bottom of that. I think if you go to the next slide, it'll probably show that better. That the dog bows actually rotate in and out. They turn at the bottom, so somebody can come up, put the food in, turn it back without ever having to open the gate there. And then the next slide, actually the slide previous, if you can go back to that. They also have four individual small kennels, and you'll notice that that divider on the top one, it can come out to make an even larger space. So all in all, there's space for six animals, or you could have four large animals. So certainly plenty big for us. And then some other amenities that they added on the last slide were water that was not like a hose in there to clean everything out, and then a camera. And so with that, the veterinarian did sign off at the meeting, and they sent that to the state. And so the shelter is now open for business. So that was the meeting. Any questions? All right.
If it works.
Oh, Greg Lamont?
Just today on ABC Local News, I don't know if anyone saw it, but they're talking about Fort Worth Council wants to implement a requirement for dog tags and for cats. Supposedly Dallas has it. So I would defer to you. Is that a good or a bad idea? I know at your presentation, you kind of wasn't too keen on it.
Oh, no. I'm for tacks.
Yeah. No, no. Well, I don't think that, we didn't cover it that night, so it's not really agended for that. Any other questions?
I can come back.
Yeah. All right. Consent agenda, items three through six. Would anyone on council like to remove any item? All right. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items three through six.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Rowe and a second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous. Agenda item seven is a proclamation that Councilmember Alicia Flurry will present. Alicia?
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. There was an accident right in front of Walgreens on Trophy Lakes. Our fire department out there, so slowed me down a little bit. So Trophy Club resident Chris Bailey is no stranger to spreading goodwill from his annual toy drive. I believe we're going on over fifteen years of that, also helping the homeless, whether it's delivering meals once a week or sleeping bags, suitcases, coats, things like that. And most recently, he by accident founded a movement called Everybody Love Everybody. I'm sure we've all heard of that in this room. And that came from the tragic Dallas PD shooting July 7th of 2016. It was a very awful, awful day, as we all remember. And of course, Chris Bailey was distraught and wanted to do something but didn't know what. And he was about two miles from downtown, and he pulled over to Walmart, got a poster board and Black Sharpie, and made a sign, and went to the crime scene and walked around, and was met with all positivity, fist bumps, handshakes, hugs, smiles. And ever since then, it has just taken literally the world by storm. I think pretty much overnight, his Facebook page garnered over fifty thousand followers. And for those of you on social media, that is no small feat at all. So it just goes to show that this day and age, this type of movement is needed. We need to be reminded that kindness is a year-round initiative, not just in the month of February, but year-round. So I thank council for supporting this proclamation, which I will go ahead and read now. "A proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, supporting July 7th, 2018, as Everybody Love Everybody Day in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Whereas three hundred and sixty-one police officers were killed in the line of duty since 2016, with Texas suffering the most deaths at twenty-nine fatalities. And whereas mental illness played a part in twenty-five percent of the nine hundred and eighty-seven fatal police shootings in 2017. And whereas over two hundred school shootings have occurred in the U.S. since 2012. And whereas suicide and homicide account for more than eighty percent of violence-related deaths. And whereas each year, one point four million people worldwide lose their lives to violence. And for each one, many more are injured and suffer from a range of physical, sexual, reproductive, and mental health problems. And whereas violence is preventable and its impacts can be lowered by reducing risks and implementing violence prevention programs in schools. And whereas promoting positive nurturing relationships within families and communities can prevent violence. And whereas spreading kindness, compassion, and love can make the world a better place. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim July 7th, 2018, as Everybody Love Everybody Day."
Would you like to move?
And I move to pass and approve. The proclamation is read.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Flurry and a second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, raise your hands. All opposed? It passes unanimously.
Now, that was just a lag.
I forgot about it.
He voted against it, yeah.
It's just the internet. It's not...
So remember now, on July 7th, that is the day where everyone should make their sign, get out, and spread a little love. That's the goal here, and not just the one day a year. But, you know, Chris does it pretty much almost every day. He finds a busy street corner. So it only takes a few minutes of your time, and it can make a big difference. So thank you.
I think they want to get a picture, and there's only five of us, so we might as well all go down. Yeah, we'll leave them out.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Item 8A is case Z-1A-001 Unzoned Parcels. We will open up the public hearing at 7:22 regarding a town-initiated request to zone approximately 2.15 acres of land to R8 Single Family District, generally located northeast of SH114 and 114 Business, to zone approximately 12.81 acres of land to GU Government Use District, generally located south of Indian Creek Drive and approximately one hundred and twenty-five feet west of West Hillside Place, whereas Councilmember Lamont would say in plain English Harmony Park. And to zone approximately 0.50 acres of land to R10 Single Family District, generally located south of Indian Creek Drive and approximately thirty feet east of Trune Drive, again in plain English, the land between the Church of Christ and the apartments. All of this within Trophy Club's town limits. Holly, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. We will close the public hearing at 7:23. Item 8B. Lisa, your turn.
On December 12th, 2017, I came before y'all, and y'all approved the zoning map when Mayor Protem Schachner asked that the proposed loop road was added back to the map. In addition, I added color and took care of some discrepancies. While I was at it, researching all the property in town, I realized that there were three properties that didn't have a zoning district. I couldn't find any documentation whatsoever that they were ever zoned as part of a PD or a straight zoning. And so I've come forward to give all of these properties a zoning district because everything in town needs one, whether it can be developed and used or not. The first property is over on the southwest side of town. This is, by the way, Exhibit A just shows where all the properties are. But this R8 property that I'm proposing at the southwest side of town, it goes over the highway. But back in the seventies, when this was first plotted, the highway was not there, and this area actually had residential lots included in it. When the nineties came through, or when the nineties came, and apparently, I guess, houses hadn't been built yet. But the plot was replatted because Tech stock came through, and they needed to build their highway, and so they had to redesign the neighborhood a little bit right there. Anyway, as a result, for some reason, the town maps were, they were shown lots of times with, without that section in town limits. Some of our maps are shown with a curve on it. Some of them are shown with a hard corner. And so I found out with research that this actually is in town limits. It was part of that original plat. And so just because it's part of, just because Tech stock owns it, doesn't change its jurisdiction. And the kind of jagged divot there actually comes, I found out, because there, that corner piece that's not outlined, that is a piece of property owned by the Texas Utility Company that hasn't been annexed by any jurisdiction whatsoever. So it's not actually in town limits. So R8 is an appropriate zoning district for this area because that neighborhood is zone R8. It was intended to be R8 on that property anyway. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan designates this as a low-density residential, which goes along with the R8 use. The second property is Harmony Park, which is owned by the town. This property, it is, it's surrounded by all the residential. It was just assumed that it had a residential zoning in the past. In fact, I couldn't find any proof of that. And so I'm proposing to zone it as government use. And that's because it is a government use. It's a park that's owned by the town. It's for the people to all use. I also considered proposing commercial recreation, CR. But chose against that because some of the commercial recreation uses included things like sporting goods stores and things like that, that I didn't think that we wanted to be able to open that up on the park property. We wanted to keep it to things that were strictly, you know, town uses, things that are, you know, not things that cost money to get in or to buy something, just something that the whole town can use and enjoy for recreation purposes. This property, there will be no changes on this property at all. I know that there were some residents that were concerned about that. There's absolutely no changes proposed or planned at all for the future because the town knows how important this park is to the residents and that it really is one of our gems that we have. The club identifies it as parks and green space, which correlates with the GU zoning simply because a park is a government use. And the last property, this is the triangular property that's about half an acre. It's between the Church of Christ and the Vineyards Apartments, fronting onto Indian Creek. Probably, you might not have ever noticed it, or maybe you have. It's kind of overgrown, doesn't get taken care of real well since it's currently owned by a bank because it was foreclosed on many, many years ago. It's actually partly in Denton County, partly in Tarrant County. I believe it's Denton County that recently they decided to take, or decided to do a sheriff's deed, I believe, on it to take their part of it. And now it belongs to the county rather than the bank because the bank wasn't paying their property taxes on it. And so the county has the ability to do that, and Tarrant County just hasn't bothered to do it. Doesn't really matter, but it's kind of an interesting history because I tried to get a hold of the owner, and it was near impossible. So this property on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it's low-density residential. This area was originally, part of it was for residential, and R10 is the only residential zoning that is touching it. There are PDs on either side of it. And so I thought that would be appropriate. I didn't think that it would be appropriate to propose that it's added to a different PD unless that group came forward and said that they were interested in it, you know. PD unless that group came forward and said that they were interested in it, you know. Their P&amp;Z had questions about, well, what about, you know, adding it to the church's PD, PD 24, you know, maybe they want to use it. And if they're interested in that, then that's, you know, something that they can, you know, that can be done, but that, the zoning doesn't really affect that. It can still be R10 or anything else and still be used just as open space, you know, picnic bench kind of a thing, you know, if they just wanted to mow it and maintain all the trees that are out there. This isn't an area that would be built on or developed or anything like that. This area, it is, the R10 makes sense to go with the, this low-density residential. And the zoning of this isn't going to affect the church or any of the residents around it. The last thing that I did was on the zoning map that's shown here, all of the gas well sites in town, they were always shown as kind of a gold color, and rather than shown with their zoning district, they were shown with their gas well number that identifies it. I do still have the gas well number shown on the map, just because that's the only way that I'm aware of that we really keep track of them. And so, those are still there, but we did change the colors of all of the gas wells because they do, in fact, each have their own straight zoning district because they were not included in PD 27. And so now they're just shown as their zoning district so that everything shows its zoning, it just also still has the identification on it for the gas wells. So, the planning and zoning, they heard this item on June 7th and they recommended approval unanimously. We had one resident come forward and ask about the park and like the future of Harmony Park. And I had, I believe, 12 calls from the zoning letters asking about the three different properties, and all those people were completely happy whenever they got off the phone once I just explained that they just didn't have a zoning district and nothing was changing on any of those properties. So, I'm available for questions.
All right. We have our distinguished P&amp;Z chairman, Dennis Sheridan, here tonight. Do you have anything to add?
I'm available for questions.
All right. Councilmember Rowe.
Yeah, so Lisa, real quick, if you could back the presentation up to the Harmony Park slide?
Sure.
I have a question. So, in the lower right-hand corner there, just off of the property you've drawn the border of, there are three parcels there that we own where we have a temporary park, or not temporary park, where we installed a parking lot. We own those three parcels. The zoning map and proposed zoning that we have in front of us today does not rezone those three parcels to match Harmony Park, even though they're a part of Harmony, really functionally, they're a part of Harmony Park. According to the zoning map, part of them are still a part of PD 22, which is the property to the south, and one of the three is still R10, which is the neighborhood there. So, is there any reason why we didn't go ahead and rezone all of the town-owned property to match itself there, since it would make sense to do that?
Well, these areas in PD 22, I didn't include those, they appear to be, I mean, they appeared to be area that was open space specifically for PD 22. So, you don't want to take away from that. Are you, are you just talking about there's like a triangle here?
There's three parcels, and we own them all. And I believe that there's no restriction of access between them, the parking lot, and the park. I could be wrong about part of that, but I do not, I believe they are all open to the park. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So their use, which is what zoning is about, is land use, is contiguous with the park.
Okay.
So, since we're doing this for cleanup purposes, it would seem to me that maybe we would want to do that, would want to include those in this change, but obviously, we can't do that with what's in front of us tonight because those are separate properties that haven't been listed in the agenda item, but I just wanted to ask about that.
Right, yeah. If council wishes, we can come back and include those with Harmony Park.
Right. So I guess my question would be to David, would this require an additional public hearing to come back?
Notice for those.
I know, but to come back, we would have to do an additional public hearing to add those, that parking lot to this zoning?
Yes.
And you'd have to notice the property.
And go through P&amp;Z, same process?
My question, Dennis Sheridan, one little question. My question would be if you tabled it or sent it back to P&amp;Z, would it be simpler than starting all over again with a new case?
You'd still have to do another notice, but...
Because those areas weren't included in the notice, so it can't be.
It can't be voted on tonight.
Right, yeah, we get that.
You could vote on the big chunk and send it back.
Yeah, I would look to staff to...
Okay, Riley?
And then, so I also want to ask about the Tech Dot piece.
Okay.
If you could go back one more slide. I have a difficult time understanding why we would zone Tech Dot right-of-way that's owned by the state of Texas as residential. Seems like all that's going to do is make people ask me questions, and I can say, I agree, it doesn't make sense, but sometimes we do things that don't make sense. It seems like it's owned by a government, it's a right-of-way for a state highway that qualifies as a governmental use. Seems to me like that would be the preferred way to go there. Again, I don't suppose we can do that tonight since we've notified adjacent property owners of the change to R8 rather than the change to GU. But anyway, I would just like to state that that's my personal preference, since we're trying to clean it up and make it make sense.
I actually, GU was my first thought when I was thinking about this because it is a government use. But I went to R8 simply because the, because that was the original intent, that's what the plat shows, and it's never going to be anything else, it's not going to be developed as something else, it is what it is. And so, you know, just like our streets are zoned residential or commercial or whatever, you're not going to develop on the streets, that was my same line of thought with this. If y'all want to do a different zoning, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that they can decide if they would like to assign a different zoning district to it because it's the same area.
It would be if it was, it depends on what was noticed. I don't think you can go from residential to GU. You could go to a less restrictive residential. You could do less than you've noticed, but not more, and by changing, changing the complete zoning district, I think...
Yeah, to me, it wouldn't be congruent with the notice, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Personally, I think that we probably, the prudent thing would be to table, send it back to P&amp;Z and have it go through the process again because those are certainly changes that I agree with. If you're going to clean something up, I mean, we can do it piecemeal and do the couple items that we've not talked about, but to me, I think you table the whole thing, send it back to P&amp;Z, and then bring it back once it's, once it reflects the changes that we have.
We can do that, but the extra little pieces next to Harmony Park still would not be included because when it's tabled, you're not renoticing.
Or just rejected outright. Give us your recommendation.
Or you can table these and renotice those, it'd be a different case, or you could renotice the case or turn this down and bring back a whole new case.
Well, you tell us what you prefer, what the preferred route.
You could approve and then...
I think you could table it. I think you table it, send it back down to P&amp;Z and renotice everything under the same case. That way, in the future, when people are looking, there's still one case number, you don't get confused for records.
But if it's tabling, you wouldn't renotice that?
You can renotice.
Because, so you can table an item, so not close it and make a decision, and then renotice it with a different acreage?
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Okay.
So, any of the changes that you're proposing, would any of them be built on?
No.
So it's just paperwork?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a second yet.
You don't have a say?
I don't have a second yet.
Oh.
Motion to approve as presented.
All right, motion dies for lack of a second. Anybody else? Any questions? Any comments? Mayor Sanders, you have anything? You've been quiet all night.
I think he's frozen.
Is he frozen?
He's frozen. (laughing).
Oh!
You, what you did.
I know, I jinxed it.
I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to table this item, send it back down to, let me give Nick a chance, Mayor Sanders.
There you go. Just remember this, next time someone says we're going to have self-driving cars.
It's part of the conversation. All right, well, he hit our little app to speak, but I don't hear him. So anyway, I'll make a motion to table this, send it back down to P&amp;Z, and have this come back to us with a different case number.
Second.
Different case number?
Correct.
So you're not tabled?
Actually, I'll tell you what, why don't we just turn this one down?
Table it.
So I'll make a motion to deny this case Z18-001.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Councilmember Jensen, why? The reason that I would deny this case is to then bring it back under a different case number to correct the items that I agree with, Councilmember Rowe.
The 114?
That's the 114.
She said Harmony doesn't change.
No, we would change it.
If we renotice it.
If we renotice it, that's why I'm denying the whole, that's why I'm denying the whole case number. Councilmember Lamont?
At the P&amp;Z meeting, we had several residents show up, and I think if we do a motion to deny, just the word might upset them a little bit. Why can't we just table it and send it back to P&amp;Z?
Because we could, if we, like Lisa's saying, if we tabled this, then we couldn't bring it back under this...
You could.
This case number.
That you can. It happens all the time when notices aren't done properly.
Okay. I withdraw my motion. Does the second agree?
I'll say, I agree.
Okay. I will make a motion to table this item and bring it back under a different case number, under the same case number amended.
And the reason I say that is I think for clarity, if people are looking at records in the future, if there's more than one case number, there's more chance for confusion.
Yeah, so let's get this straight. I make a motion to table and send it back to P&amp;Z. Holy cow.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Rowe. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous, so there you go. Item number nine. Tony, your turn.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, Council. During our April 10th, 2018 council meeting, I presented the possibility of applying for a grant for additional lighting at Harmony Park Fields 1 through 4. During that presentation, I mentioned the project costing approximately $190,000, of which $50,000 will be awarded from a grant leaving the balance for the town at $140,000. Greater Northwest Soccer Association expressed interest in dividing the cost with the town, leaving the town with a potential balance of $70,000. The deadline for this letter of interest is September 28th, 2018, and the deadline to submit the application itself is October 5th, 2018. In that, in the staff, I did want to mention, staff did meet with encore representatives and mentioned that they will ensure transformer at no extra cost to the town as well. So in this slide, I included the photometrics of the park. I just wanted to explain a little bit on how, I apologize for the size of it, but wanted to explain how it sort of works. It's a grid, the homes on the north and the east side of the park will have little to no impact due to the lights. It will require five light posts. If you look at the center of the fields, 1 through 4, where the red is, the average, the average foot handle levels is approximately about 30. The entire grid scan average is about 3.2. So, the residents will be, like I said, little to, have no impact over the lights due to the poles. I added the sports complex from the city of Carrollton with the same lights that would be installed at Harmony Park. And as you can see, the surrounding areas of the fields have little to no light spill over in the dark areas. So with that, I was, address any questions or comments?
Councilmember Jensen? What's the annual cost to run the lights? Do you have any idea?
I do have some studies from the past, not on this particular one. I would, it all depends on the field usage. I can get that for you.
What do you anticipate the field usage to be? What hours do you expect these to run and what times of the year?
Mostly...
Say during, right now, daylight savings time, what hours would you expect the lights to be on?
Right now, they're requesting the lights to be turned on approximately around 8 to 10 at this time of year.
Yep. And then during cooler months, what do you anticipate?
Around 6 o'clock PM, starting around 6.
Until?
Until about 9, 9:30-ish.
9:30-ish?
Yes, sir.
What ages of, is this only, these fields only used for children?
Yes, sir, these, this would be for U4, U5, and U11 and up, including U9 and U10 as well.
Okay, so U4 and U5, I have friends that have kids that are eight years old, and they put them to bed at 8 o'clock every night. Surprised that U4 and U5 would need lights up until 10 o'clock. The others, though, you said U11 and up?
Yes, starting from, yes, U9, U10, and U11 and up.
Okay. I appreciate you answering the questions. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamont? Guess what's troubling a little bit here is, this is just moving along without any real discussion. First, it was, we're going to do a grant, and then come back, oh, we can't do a grant, we have to put it on the budget. And we've never really had any discussion with the soccer as far as a regional, are there other towns going to be putting in lights in their facilities? The Budget Committee actually turned this down. They said they didn't want to do it. And now here it is. Now, how much do we have to put into the budget for this? Can we put not to exceed $70,000? So we cover the 50, and we cover the Soccer Association 70, because my fear is, if we approve $190,000 and bam, it goes, never comes back to council. And the term, what are they using here? Expressed interest in dividing the cost. I mean, I expressed interest in a lot of things. Doesn't mean I sign off on it or I buy it. So unless we have a signed contract with them, I'd be very leery about voting on this.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yeah, so one thing I do want to echo what Greg said is that prior to, prior to a full commitment, I do want to be able to talk to the Soccer Association to get a feel for what this means for them and how it improves their ability to do the things that they're seeking to do. One of the things that comes to mind for me, and probably comes to mind for you as well, Tony, is the ability to light the whole field. Eric makes a good point about your little kids aren't going to be playing late enough to need lights in the summer, but it gives you the ability potentially to rotate uses and reconfigure year over year to manage the way the facility wears, right? So that's something I'd like to talk more about with you guys and also hear from soccer and kind of understand what the delta is. Obviously, anything that's contingent upon both cooperation with... Obviously, obviously, anything that's contingent upon both cooperation with an outside organization as well as, um, seeking a grant, I don't intend to fully commit us to it until that's, um, until those are secured. But that said, I, I am in support of taking the actions necessary to pursue those co- those, both sets of cooperations, just so we can have, get to the point where we can make the full decision.
Yes, sir.
So, so my question is, um, you obviously are needing a motion tonight to approve a hundred and forty thousand, correct?
Uh, I have to certify that we have the, the funding, um, before applying for the grant, so, um, it would be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the, for the potential.
So we would have to approve, uh, a hundred and ninety thousand?
Correct.
Okay, and where in the budget, so I've, I'm assuming that we're going to have to account for this, and so where in the budget would you place this? To earmark that money?
A- as of right now, it's in the, um, Parkland dedication, uh, request for fiscal year nineteen.
Okay, uh, how, if we approve this, which I'm not, I'm not against just submitting, but if we approve this, then how can we restrict that, David, to protect ourselves so that, like councilmember Lamont, which I share his concern that if we approve a hundred and ninety thousand, something happens and, oh, we got a hundred and ninety thousand to spend on lights? How do, how do we, short of, I know that items come back over a certain amount, but how do we really guarantee that that's restricted and, and can't be used unless we approve?
Move to approve authorization of that funding for purposes of applying for the grant only.
Okay.
And tie it to the grant.
Okay.
That if the grant's denied, this is not approved.
So, so what if the grant is approved? Then are we?
Then it's up to, I would do an up to an amount. To exceed a certain amount of what you're comfortable with approving.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
The soccer association did speak to us. Tiffany was also here representing the parks, um, so, uh, based on that, I make a motion to approve authorization of, uh, I may need David to write this out, but, uh, I will attempt to do this.
Write it from memory?
Yeah, let's see if we can do it, uh. Authorize the town, uh, to apply for grant, but I gotta, hell, I need you to write me a motion.
Okay. Motion to move to approve authorization of whatever amount you're comfortable, of an amount up to.
Hundred and forty thousand.
One hundred and forty thousand dollars for the purposes of applying for the grant for these lights.
Can we add to that? We al- also, that the soccer association is contributing seventy thousand of that.
Of the one hundred and forty thousand?
Correct.
Conditioned upon participation with, of seventy thousand dollars from the, your, from the soccer association. You're really approving one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
We need to do one ninety.
If, if you want to limit it to seventy.
I wanna, I wanna backdoor that we di- we can.
Back out of.
That we're not gonna.
Put a hundred.
I'm, I'm not gonna support paying a hundred and ninety, so what's my backdoor to limit to seventy?
Not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, so you wanna work.
Motion to approve authorization of seventy thousand dollars to be spent in conjunction with the grant, applying for the grant, and also instructions to solicit participation from the soccer association and the regional association or the other party that would contribute.
So moved as stated by attorney David Dodd.
Not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Not to exceed seventy thousand.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Jensen, a second by councilmember Fleury. Just to be, just to, uh, well, I'll let, uh, councilmember Lamont speak first.
Well, actually, I was going to do the max, uh, seventy thousand dollars, I'm fine, but I still would like to have soccer come back to us to see what their overall plan is. I mean, you have, there's towns, you have, uh, Justin coming on with three thousand lots, you have, uh, Argyle, and I'm sorry, not Argyle, Hasley coming on with thousands of lots. So are we gonna bear the brunt of this? Are they would wanna be building soccer fields with lights too, to share this burden? So, I mean, I'd like, like to see them come back to us.
All right, uh, final approval. Councilmember Rowe.
If this motion is approved, are we in any way held back from moving forward immediately with grant process at all? Does this give us everything necessary for, to pursue the grant in earnest?
I, I believe so, and if, and if, I can keep you, uh, Mr. Klaas updated.
Okay.
From here, yeah.
But to your understanding, that's where that gets us.
Yes, and, and for council's purposes, this, bringing this before council today was strictly so that we could correctly fill out the application, which merely asked, do you possess the funding required for the project? It's just a simple yes or no that we have to check. If we were to check no, then we obviously wouldn't be applying for the grant, so we would need that to just move the grant forward. I certainly understand council's concern with a not to exceed amount, and, and we fully understand that.
And, and so just so I'm clear, we, we are asking for a hundred and ninety thousand, is that correct? That's, that's what the motion?
No, the motion's for seventy thousand.
So, so does that get us what we need on the grant?
I don't know what you're requesting for the grant, but the motion is your.
Total cost of the project's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If we were to receive the fifty thousand dollar grant, that brings us to one forty. If soccer association shares in that cost with us, half as they have indicated would, that's, gets us to the seventy thousand.
So you feel comfortable checking yes with that motion? That's what you're saying?
Uh, I do.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Jensen.
I, councilman Lamont is, you know, concerned with what other cities are gonna do. I'm not. The town of Trophy Club has to do what's best for the town of Trophy Club and what's best for our citizens. I'm not gonna, what Roanoke decides to do, what Argyle decides to do, that's their business, and, um, we have to look after our own, uh, as council members. We're here for our residents, and that's what, uh, that's what we should be concerned with, not about any other town.
Uh, councilmember Lamont.
Can we get a copy of the app? The application for the grant?
Yes, sir.
Good idea.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion on the floor by councilmember Jensen, a second by councilmember Fleury, I believe. Holly, do you, are you comfortable repeating the motion, just so we're all clear?
To authorize seventy thousand dollars and solicit the soccer association for an additional seventy thousand dollars to proceed with the grant.
Okay.
Is that adequate?
Yep, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, uh, councilmember Fleury.
Just real quick, um, just to alleviate concerns, I know, uh, councilmember Lamont had alluded to, when the soccer association did come, he did provide a lot of explanations on the lighting, how it's gonna be utilized, how it's gonna work with other communities. And I think we were pretty much all on board with the discussion there and wanted to go forward with the grant. So I just can't remember all the details, but I do remember we're all very comfortable with how the lighting was going to be utilized amongst everybody, so that's all.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Everybody's clear on the motion? All right, all those, uh, in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed? It is unanimous. Item number ten, Jonathan.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. Um, just an update, Mayor Sanders has, um, uh, we've lost connection, and we've actually lost connection via phone and, uh, email. So we're, we're working in the background to try to get him back. We hope everything's okay there, um, in central Texas, but, um, we appreciate your patience. Uh, as you may remember, uh, counsel, at your last meeting, um, you were provided an update on the budget process for supplemental items. Tonight, um, we're gonna have our, uh, budget manager, John Zagorsky, come up and give you an overview of the general fund. Talk about, a little bit about the, uh, debt strategy and the INS rate. Um, we're gonna look at, um, also a strategy that involves the, uh, hotel occupancy tax fund. And then, um, based on some comments at, at the last meeting the mayor made, we're gonna give two scenarios. One, based on the, um, uh, lowering the tax rate to the effective rate, and then if we maintain the tax rate at its current rate, um, as it is today. I think one thing that you'll notice in this presentation is that we're now experiencing, um, expenditure numbers at a, a level of being fully staffed here at the town and providing the same level of service, so, um, we're not looking at, we haven't recommended any increase in service levels, but we are seeing some growth based on, um, uh, the, the town being fully staffed and the implications of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to our budget manager.
Good afternoon, counsel. So if I had to describe, um, how we prepared our budget this year and our overall big strategy, it's property tax relief. And so that's really our main concern, and I know that's your main concern. With property evaluations rising, we're looking for ways that we can alleviate funds, move funds away from the general fund so that the burden isn't always being borne by property taxes. And so I'm gonna go over a few strategies that we prepared our budget based on. The first one is the effective rate. So the effective rate is one of the best ways to look at cost of services year over year. The controller says it's the gold standard. Not many cities actually do this every year. Cities in high growth can actually adopt the effective rate, but it's rare that many of them do. And this is really a good way to evaluate cost of service year over year. What it essentially does is hold your property tax, tax earnings at zero minus new growth. Or except for new growth. The second strategy, which, uh, we believe is gonna bring some property tax relief, is by maintaining our eleven cent tax, uh, debt rate. And so what we want to do is actually move some expenditures, or is there specifically rated to debt funding from CCPDs who'd alleviate their debt funding for two years by the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. We are able to do this because, as we've seen over the past couple of years, our INS is able to start growing in fund balance. So our debt service fund has, not only has enough money to pay all its obligations, it's actually gaining in fund balance. And because of the growth that we're seeing in existing property values, the eleven cents goes further each year. And so what it's doing is it's growing and it will keep adding a fund balance. So what we're proposing to do is alleviate the CCPD of their, a portion of their debt service payment and have our INS rate take that over. Or is the eleven cents paying for that? And what that'll essentially do is allow us to shift expenditures from the general fund over to the CCPD for two years. But the, our long-term strategy by doing that is, it just being a two-year thing, it will allow us to create additional capacity. So councilmember Rowe actually recommended this to us, is showing you our debt model. And so what you can really see here is around two thousand twenty, between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, you see a large drop. And so by keeping at the eleven cent rate and moving those expenditures over to CCPD, we're actually heightening that drop. And so we're creating additional capacity there by maintaining the eleven cent tax rate and shifting any of those payments for two years. And so that big drop right there is what you wanna see. You wanna see level debt models stair stacking down. And so right now, the trophy, trophy club is set up to, they basically issue debt to maintain eleven cents every two to four years. And so we're, we're in a really good, uh, place to keep doing street improvements and street reconstructions, and I think that's what this model shows. And so by maintaining the eleven cents now, we're able to provide some property tax relief specifically to the general fund, to the M and L, by keeping our INS level, and that will allow you to do streets projects without raising the tax rate in a few more years. So the next strategy was shifting hotel occupancy expenditures to the general fund. Moving these expenditures, what it will do is create fund balance, and that's really what we want to do, is basically boost the hotel occupancy fund balance. We want to do this for a couple of reasons, mainly because of phase three of our next development. The expenditures we'd be moving out are specific to the Fourth of July event and some personnel. So one point two five FTEs, three positions, mainly recreation, communications, and the Fourth of July event. So that represents about two hundred thousand dollars expenditures we'd be moving out of hotel occupancy and into the general fund for two years. And I'll show you these two models. So if we didn't move these expenditures, what we'd be having in, whenever we go to issue debt, we'd have about, estimating about six hundred thousand dollars in revenue and a debt service payment of about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which will yield us about a six point five million dollar bond. And so this is what we've estimated really is about the cost based on costs that we've seen from the city of Roanoke. I believe the mayor has a question.
Do you have a question, or are you just waving at us? No.
Okay. All right.
Brilliant soft. Can we just make this the normal thing? This is too.
Sure.
I'm having li- I'm having too much fun with this.
I like it. Um, so in our second model, by, uh, moving these expenditures out, we're gonna start increasing fund balance. And our ultimate goal is to get to about one point one million dollars in fund balance and lower that debt payment to about a five point four million dollar bond, which will yield us an annual debt issuance payment of about, or a debt payment of about four hundred thousand dollars. So that gives you that two hundred dollars of, or two hundred thousand dollars worth of capacity there so that we can take on those expenditures from the general fund two years from now. So what I will do is, two years from now, you'll have some property tax relief. We'll have expenditures there that we can use for equipment replacement and/or any future use. And so, oh, it's just future planning, and I think it really helps show that, uh, we're not gonna just use the hotel occupancy funds just for to build a parking garage in a civic center, or we're actually gonna be using that to fund things that we can use hot funds for, like our Fourth of July event. So overall, these are the strategies we used to prepare. I'm gonna go over a little bit of general fund revenues and where we see ourselves. Most of these will be presented at the effective rate until we get to the end, when we talk about big picture, and what the difference is between the effective rate and our current rate. So the revenues that we see increasing are property tax, and that's because we have about a two percent growth in new values, which is yielding us about ninety five thousand dollars in FY eight, um, in FY nineteen. So, uh, property tax rate, the estimated effective rate right now is point four three nine two, so it's less than a two cent drop. Uh, growth of intergovernmental charges per service, we're seeing about a two hundred and forty five thousand dollar increase. This corresponds specifically to expenditures for the fire service. So these are the charges that we charge the pit in the mud, uh, to provide fire service, and they're a portion of it. And so if we, if they accept less in expenditures, we'll see less in revenue, but it's specifically tied to those increase in cost of service, so that's covering those costs. PD thirty revenue is not included in this forecast, and there's a very specific reason for that. PD thirty in the past, if you've included it in budgets, it's been infrequent. We never know exactly when it's gonna happen, and we don't know the exact timing of when we're gonna receive, um, the permitting revenue and the fire revenue. So we've actually held this out of our model, well, just because there is no guarantee on specific timing, and I'd hate to create a revenue shortfall by doing that, if we were depending on those monies. So areas of decreased revenue, license and permit, and we're expecting about a forty percent, forty-six percent decrease. We're estimating about ten homes being built, uh, per year next year. That'll yield us about twenty seven thousand dollars in revenue, and we'll see about a hundred thousand dollars in miscellaneous permits. We get this for people building fences, pools, just miscellaneous improvements, they're doing their house that they need permits for. And so this is a major area of decrease, but it was expected. As buildout slows, then we start getting into more of a flat level. We're not having as many new home constructions. And so this was a major revenue source about four years ago. It was probably our second highest. Now it's slowly but surely worked its way down. So sales tax, what we've done here is we've, um, factored in what was, what recurring non, uh, recurring remnants. And so these revenues that we were receiving that were one-time, that were kind of spiking our sales tax numbers, through the STARS reporting, we've been able to single out what some of those are. And so now that we have kind of a baseline for what I think our sales tax is and our regular recurring payments, we're able to better project where that is. And so overall, it's a very small decrease from what we were budgeting last year, but it is still just a little bit of a decrease. Overall, our sales tax numbers are doing well, and our regular recurring remnants are paying well. Franchise fees are reduced further due to cord-cutting trends, so we're seeing there's people less likely to have landlines. People are not having the big cable packages through eighteen T universe anymore, so let's be, more people are just streaming. And because of that, we're seeing decreased revenue for franchise fees. Also, as buildout occurs, we see other franchise fees, electoral, Atmos, all of these, um, new houses online, more bills, so we'll see, we're seeing just kind of a decrease in how much that's increasing, so, oh, that's why this is slowly curving down, but the big one here that's hurting us is cable franchise. So moving on, um, overall, if you look at the top right-hand corner, we're seeing about a ninety thousand dollar change or increase in revenue, primarily due to property tax. So overall, at the effective rate, we're gonna see an increase of about ninety thousand dollars in revenue. So expenditures. Expenditures are one thing that are rising, and many of these things that you're gonna see, um, we're estimating about an eight hundred and ninety one thousand dollar increase in expenditures. These are not adding programs, these are not adding bodies. A lot of these are just cost of service increases, and so, as we try to explain to the finance committee, a lot of these, we don't have a lot of discretion over. And so I'll walk you through what kind of each of these are. Personnel, we're estimating about a four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar increase. Think we lost them again. So, health insurance increase. So, um, right now, we're estimating about a fifteen in, percent increase in our health insurance premiums. This cost us, the town, or at least the general fund, a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Again, we're being conservative. Again, we're being conservative of this. This could actually could be less, maybe 11%. We haven't done any tweaks to the plan thus far, or this is just the rough numbers that they gave us at the, is it three-month or six-month marker? Three-month. And so now at the six-month meeting, which is going to be probably later in July, we'll have a better understanding of where we're at and where we expect premiums to be. And so we can hone this down a little bit, but right now, 15%. We saw about an 11% increase last year. Merit increases. So we use the same forecasting method as we did last year, 2% of salaries plus benefits. And so this nets us about $132,000 for merit increases. $15,600 of that portion is the mud, specific to that fire personnel. And so that is being charged and included in the fire budget. Hotel occupancy expenditures for personnel represent that 1.25 FTE, represent $112,000 worth of expenditures, so that's just moving those bodies into the general fund, those portions. Our TMRS rate change, we saw our TMRS rate go from 12.91 to 13.10. This is kind of the first increase we've seen in two years. And this is just based on actuarial methods. And so it will, it'll be normally climbing like this. These aren't big, but it yielded about a $33,000 increase. One thing that you're going to notice is that salaries look like they've increased substantially. And the reason for this, the, for the increase is we're no longer budgeting vacancy savings. So in previous years, I would look at any vacancies that we had, and then I would time all of these vacancies on when we actually anticipated hiring them. And by doing that, we could capture some of those savings so that we didn't have to raise the tax rate for people that wouldn't be hired at that time. So since now that we're very, very close to being fully staffed, there is not, there isn't a whole lot more of that. Vacancies are now being budgeted at the salary midpoint. So what we're seeing with market conditions is to recruit people, we need to budget at the salary midpoint. If not, you can create budget shortfalls by having to go through and offer more money, and then there not being sufficient budget to offer them those positions. We haven't had that happen yet, but we need to be prepared. And so another good place that you can see this is kind of our seasonal, what we're seeing with our summer camp counselors versus what other cities are doing to recruit. We, we need to be competitive in the marketplace to get good people. So budgeting at the midpoint is a much better way of recruiting those people. Services and supplies. The Fourth of July event represents the largest increase in this area. It's $93,000, and that's just for the Fourth of July. That includes fireworks, inflatables, everything that happens that day. Those are those expenditures. We saw standard increases throughout many departments, and so these are items that we do. Do you have a question?
Yeah, on the July 4th event?
Yes, sir.
How much of that 93 is the fireworks?
20, 24,000.
24,000.
Okay, so. He used to be 10?
No, he was asking what the mud used to contribute some. They used to contribute 10, a long time ago.
Yeah, about three years ago, I think that stopped.
It made them, yeah.
So another $70,000 in expenses for the July 4th event?
Yes. And so mainly that goes to inflatables. That's usually where you get those big inflatables out there. That, that's one of the biggest costs of that. And the band, yes, the band that we have every year.
What band?
We have a band that comes every year. All right, standard increases throughout departments include water, electricity, and fuel. So water, we're estimating about a 20% increase in price. The mayor actually informed us that the mud came out and said it was going to be about a 24% increase, and so we're going to update those numbers. So that's one thing specifically we'll look at and have to increase. But we estimate overall about a $31,000 increase, and that was factoring in everyone's usage. So we don't just do a flat increase. We go through, make sure that we're tracking usage and what the bills are looking like, if it's down or up. And so this usually protects us from just doing a flat 20% increase. Electricity, same thing, we evaluate in usage, estimating a 10% price increase. Our electricity provider has come close every year. If they go over this, usually there's a meeting and they back it down because many people protest. And so 10% is kind of that magic number where they back away from. So this is a good estimate for them as well.
You're talking an increase in the price or an increase in use?
Increase in the price.
Increase in the price, and how often do we shop that?
Mayor Potem, actually, this is going to be an increase that Encore passes on to us.
So that's different than?
Right, our, our electricity rate is actually a contracted rate, and we're under, we just renewed a new contract. We've got, I don't want to misspeak, but it's, it's more than three years left on the contract. And so we're locked in under that rate, and we, and remember, we have a special rate for the new facility as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a different, that's, I would have put an asterisk on that one.
Okay, sorry about that.
Because it looks like we're taking a 10% increase in our, in our contract, but I understand.
So fuel, we're estimating about a $12,000 increase. We're estimating our fuel at $3 per unleaded and $3.50 for diesel. And the reason why this is a little high is we saw about a 25 cent increase in a month. And so I really want to be cautious throughout the summer and evaluate closer to July, and the end of July of where we see fuel. And so this is another thing that we actually get taxes waived on it, and we do things to lower this through our fuel contract. But based on usage, this is where we estimate it to be. Property insurance, so we estimate about a $23,000 increase. The big thing here is the flood. So the flood that affected most of South Texas will cause rises in premiums everywhere. And so we're really anticipating a large increase of this. And so Sandy just, it hit a lot of cities a number of ways, and TML paid out a lot. And so we're all going to see rate increases related to that. So supplemental and equipment replacement. Overall, we are seeing about a $432,000 for just funding these general fund supplemental items, total about $153,000, and that was presented to you at the last council meeting. And then equipment replacement is about $279,000 is what we estimate for equipment replacement. That's made up of our ambulance lease payment, which is about $100,000. I think it's between 90 and 100. Our physical life pack, pool equipment replacement, information services, equipment replacement. And so we're moving on to the big picture and kind of what it looks like revenues versus expenditures and net increase, decrease in fund balance. Overall, at the effective rate, we're estimating about a $771,000 decrease in fund balance. And this is, this is dipping. We're not dipping below the 30% marker, but it's dipping big. And I want to talk a little bit about sustainability. Because we're dipping in for operating expenditures, this is seen as a bad thing. We don't want to do that. We, we really want to stay away from dipping in the fund balance for operating expenditures because you'll continue to do it in our years. And so what we really want, if we do dip in the fund balance, for it to be one-time recurring or non-recurring expenditures. And so if we show this at our current tax rate, the decrease in fund balance is about $550,000. And so these items, we can specific, if we go back a couple of slides, you can actually see that this is primarily due to one-time equipment replacement, supplemental items, and the hotel occupancy, which is a planned two-year drawdown. And so that, that looks better to rating agencies. That looks better for overall, whenever we're being evaluated for debts. And that's something that can explain of why we're decreasing. And so our current tax rate better facilitates a decrease in fund balance that is explainable versus the effective rate. I'll stop right here because we're going to move on to CIP, and I know you guys will have some questions here. Is anyone?
Councilmember Rowe?
Yeah, I can, go ahead and just, I took notes as you were going along, John. I am in favor of the proposals you've made relative to CCPD and also hot funds and the way to sort of look at that as a long-term outlook. I think it makes sense, and I think it's smart, particularly with respect to CCPD and our debt model. We're always going to be behind the eight ball on streets and drainage. It will never go away. And so, you know, the plan to float that INS rate at 11 ongoing is, is the right move and the right thing to do. And we do, I did notice, I wanted to point out, I don't know if you guys noticed, on the, on the bar chart that John had, we have a bond, we have, we have at least one bond coming off the books after this year, correct?
That's correct.
The red one, second to the bottom, and then there are some others that are, you know, slowly tapering. So it gives us, you know, we have multiple, that's how we create capacity, right? And I just like watching, I like watching debt get paid down. It's just so good, even though it'll just go flat anyway. But anyway, the, the other thing, I appreciate the change to budgeting vacancies. I wish that that had been the policy for the last four budgets that I was a part of, just because that's, to me, a more level-headed way of looking at it. When you're setting a tax rate, it's one thing when you're down the road, funding changes or things, but when you're looking at setting a tax rate, I think it's important to, to assume that you're going to be paying for what you expect. So a question, I have a couple of things I'd like to maybe hear from staff further on in a future meeting. One is related to the large increase in our health insurance costs. This is something we've, we, we talk about it every year, and we know it's an inevitability. It's hitting everybody in all, in all industries. I would like for us to start thinking at the staff level, and it may be something we implement this year. It may not be, it may be something we look to implement in the future. But I, I'd like to see some thoughts on looking at our contribution levels and kind of doing some forecasts and thinking about, are there areas where we start to look at some reasonable caps or limits there above what we already are doing, just to sort of get a, get a handle on what our, you know, what our long-term outlook's going to be there? The second question I have that I'd like to hear back from staff on is another thing that everyone knows is going to keep going up forever with no end in sight, and that's the cost of water. I'd like to hear more about, and this doesn't change, I don't think, the budget for this year, but the conversation warrants further discussion. It's kind of get an understanding of what our consumption has been year over year for the past several years and where those resources are going, and see if there's not some way we can sort of develop a program for some aggressive conservation actions there that, that won't necessarily impact anything negatively. It's not a conversation we've had at this level in the four years I've been doing this, so I think that would be worthwhile. And then the third and final thing, and we can make this an agenda item immediately, I think, moving forward. We can cover it in future agenda, but I do want to go ahead and establish, or at least discuss and potentially take action on establishing a restricted capital replacement fund that's separately accounted for and restricted, and establishing a long-term funding policy. For those of you on the council, this was something that we discussed briefly at our, our budget committee meeting. In the past few budgets, we've talked about capital replacement, but it's been, it's been talked about as sort of just, it's some of the money we have in the general fund. So that money that we know we have to spend eventually at some point has still been counting towards that general fund to OpEx ratio, which we want to keep healthily above 30%. So to be really realistic about the way we plan our finances moving forward, we kind of need to take that money out of our general fund. And we can't do it tomorrow, we can't do it next year or two years from now, but we got to establish a plan. And that's all I have. Thanks, John.
Councilmember Lamont, just to make sure, on page 107, the 15.6 mud, that's a credit back to us, right? To the fire budget? Because I know you have it in brackets.
Correct, so yeah, that 15% that is factored into the revenue, that the mud would be running to us.
Hot tax expenditures, the 112,000 for 19, 20, explain that.
So the $112,000 represents 1.25 FTEs. So that is .25 of a recreation coordinator, .25 of a recreation superintendent, and then .75 of our communications person. So each of those positions were funded out of the hotel occupancy fund instead of the general fund because they contributed specifically to the Fourth of July and regional.
So we're putting that back in in 19, fiscal year 19 and 20, right?
Yes.
Did we take it out somewhere else?
No, no, it, it's been in hotel occupancy, and we're moving it from hotel occupancy into the general fund. And then in two years, we're going to want to move it back.
On page 103, it says, shift hotel occupancy, that, that's to it?
So shifted away from hotel occupancy to the general fund.
Okay, but then you're putting it back in?
In, in two years, we want to put it back over there. Once we have gotten our debt payment to 400,000, we'll have $200,000 of excess revenue.
Short-term to cover our debt expenses.
Correct.
You said, is that the same reason? You said we cannot use hot tax for the Fourth of July. Is that an in-house decision or?
No, it wasn't to not use the hot tax for Fourth of July. So what we're trying to do is just move all of those expenditures out to the general fund for two years to basically increase fund balance so that we lower how much we have to take out in debt and then get that debt payment down reasonable so that it can be moved back over in two years when we have that. And that will also create you some property tax savings in two years.
Anything else?
Done.
All right. I just had a couple of questions or comments to kind of build upon what Ryland said. I, I agree on the water. I think that we can do a better job. And I'd like for us, obviously, to have this discussion and, and look outside the box that we kind of place ourselves in. I know that the mud sells water to the country club as affluent, and it would seem that we could go in with the country club and utilize. I, I know that they don't fill that pond constantly. It's done a lot of times, especially this time of the year. But perhaps look, look at ways that we can water our meetings using the affluent there by the country club or even other spots where they have, where they have ponds. And, and certainly, you know, other things like artificial turf in certain areas or just things that are outside the box to sort of, because this, this is a big, we take a big hit every year. You know, I don't know how you do your budget because it's just constantly 20%, 20%, 20%. And their infrastructure is never going to go away like ours, so they're going to constantly have, you know, have to improve their district. And so that's, thus the, the raising of the rates. And then also, I, I think it would be prudent for us to, if, if we're going to take money or if we're going to leave money in CCPD, if we are really, and I'm, I, I really like the direction of going to a restricted capital replacement program where I, I think it helps future councils to, there, there are big-ticket items that constantly come up. And I think we have to be very realistic, you know, we, we can't say that, since I've been on council, every two or three years, we're redoing something at the pool, whereas they say it would last six years. So we've got to be very honest with ourselves on what this timetable is on big capital replacements. And I, I think that we have an opportunity, if we're going to, if we're, if we're going to leave money in CCPD, that we probably should capture at least some of that money to start funding that restricted balance for emergency vehicles. So in other words, things that the chief knows that he's going to have to replace, let's at least capture that while we have the chance to, to build that fund for CCPD. And obviously, same thing with, with fire. I, I don't know if the mud is setting anything back or if they've done anything like that, but obviously, we need to do it for ambulances, we need to do it for engines and, and anything else that are big-ticket items. And I think it, I think that if we, and obviously you can't bite it off all at once, but, but certainly if we had a restricted fund where we're setting money aside each year, I think it helps future councils to know that, that when, you know, when we first got on council, there was not even a replacement policy for vehicles. And so with your help, we established that, and I think it helps future councils to know, okay, when the chief comes in and says this vehicle meets the replacement policy and we need a vehicle, that there's money already set aside. Same thing with parks and rec and, and things of that nature. And we can talk more about that in, in future meetings, but, but certainly worth discussing. Any other questions or comments? Anything at all? All right.
I have a little bit of a good news thing for you. I've still got two more slides.
Oh, he found more money.
Oh, yeah. No, Chief actually, Chief Arada did put a vehicle in for replacement in CCP as a good use of those funds this year. And so he's actually already been looking at it, so I think he's actually ahead of the curve.
But I guess, I guess my point is those things are going to constantly come up, and it would be nice to, it, it would be easier for him to know that money's there and not have to come to a council and, and say, you know, this vehicle is 15 years old and got 800,000 miles, we need a vehicle, you know? And, and, and easy for us to say, okay, the money's there, boom, buy it, you know? So it's just kind of the, go ahead.
All right, so I'm going to give you guys a little bit of an update on our five-year CIP. And so per charter, we were supposed to write, each year by June 30th, we're supposed to actually bring forward our CIP and kind of what it looks like for the next five years. And so this model really hasn't changed too much from, as you've seen it, we've kind of stair-step the projects as they're being constructed right now. So in construction right now, it's Phoenix Drive, next will be, will be Indian Creek, Pink Drive. So the next project or next three projects that we're going out and looking at bidding is Trophy Club Drive, Sundance Court, and Meadow Creek Land. These projects are in engineering right now. So right now, they're being surveyed, and hopefully we will go out to bid for those in the next fiscal year. Or just maybe even by the end of this fiscal year. So, oh, we, this is give you kind of timeline on those projects. And the last two projects is Ember Nest Drive and Trophy Club Drive. And really, we're hoping to use these savings, so there's always a little bit of And really, we're hoping to use the savings, so there's always a little bit of savings in our CIP and how we budget for it. So we get estimated numbers from our engineers, and then we inflate them because we think the cost of concrete is constantly going up. And so we always create just a little bit of savings, and so the savings from the 2017 CO bonds that we see there, we'd actually start the engineering and surveying of Inverness Drive in the next phase of Trophy Club Drive. And so it's a very small piece, but just taking those savings in line. And so the next five years of projects are actually funded through the current issuance. And so the actual construction of those last two projects would be funded with future bonds, the 2021 issuance. And so that's the update in our five-year capital improvement program.
The Trophy Club Drive at the bottom, is that the, from the bridge, or is that?
I had that written down, I'm trying to remember, I believe so, yes, it doesn't include the bridge. It's, yeah, that little, little section of road in between there. And so that project may change as, as we discuss that, and I believe that's actually being looked at by TNP. Do you guys have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 11, I'm going to ask, that we go into executive session on the first part. I have a question that I would like to consult with the attorney over. So what I would like to do is go to item 11, but on this item, we're just going to talk about the future agenda. So does anyone have anything on that they would like to add on future agenda? Councilmember Rowe?
Yes, sir, I do, I have, I have two, one being the one I just mentioned, to discuss and potentially take action on establishment of a restricted capital replacement fund and a long-term funding policy for it.
I agree with that.
The, the second would be, I'd like to hear a little bit more from staff about the comments we had in his presentation from Mr. Parnell about the distinction between attached garage versus detached garage and, and the hair splitting there, and, and what, what reasonable actions may be available to us aside from just asking people to one-off, go to ZBA every time, if there's anything that we can do.
All right, anyone else? All right. Item 12, executive session, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney under subsection 2, one breach of contract issues, procedures and claims. Two, procedures for pit assessment, and then three, I'll add the agenda item 11, the next council meeting. And then B, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive and west of Town Limits. Council is in executive session at 8:33. Council will reconvene into regular session at 9:01. Item 13, any?
Well, 11, right?
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we, we're going to change.
Yeah, let's go back to 11 and. Let's go back to 11, and then does anybody have any, any comments or any changes that they would like to make to that agenda?
Yeah, do we need to make a motion to modify the agenda?
Not at this time, because we haven't really published the agenda yet.
Oh, okay, cool.
It's a month away.
Okay.
We have the direction.
Yeah. Any other, any other items on the next meeting? Okay. So we'll move to item 13, anyone wishing to take it, action from executive session?
You mean 12?
No, 12 was executive session.
12. 12B, oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, sorry, never mind.
I hope you're running this meeting.
You are. Don't, don't pay attention to me, don't listen to this guy.
Here at 9, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Rowe. Council is adjourned at?
9:03.
9:03.